Call meeting to order. This is the pre-town meeting for towns in Vermont. Up front here, we have the Townsend Elementary School Board.
Townsend.
Townsend Elementary School Board.
Townsend School Board.
Townsend School Board.
Thank you.
Thank you. And this is to review their warning for town meeting and to answer any questions. So, to start off, Article 1, elect a moderator for a one-year term. Any interest? Okay, move along, sorry. To accept the reports of the school directors as presented in the July 1st, 2011, June 30th, 2012 auditor's report. Are those, I don't think these pages are correct, are they? They are? Okay. Page 46, page 46.
Which is the last page.
Where did I see that? See, I don't think the pages were...
That's not the auditor's report. Those are the articles from last year.
To accept the reports of the school directors as presented July 1st, 2000, no. July 1st, 2011. And it said page 46. I don't think, is this, that's why we're here.
We don't have, we don't have an auditor's report. But I know. To accept the reports of the school districts as presented.
Yeah, oh, this one right here?
I thought those were...
Any questions about the auditor's report?
I thought that was the one for the last meeting. No.
Lot page 43.
That's what I was thinking. It's the, this one. That's our boundary. Is that in this?
No.
That's not the auditor's report.
I'll finish my start. Yeah.
Is there an auditor even present?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, does the auditors do a report of the school minutes or of the school directors? We do not, so that's why I'm asking the question. We were not presented as a board an auditor's report for approval or review.
You have your own auditors.
No, not that I'm aware of. The town has auditors, I do not.
The town, the town does. The town auditors are not committed to judge the school finances in New York.
Well, don't, we don't have...
She's right.
Yeah, but we hire, we hire now some...
Yes, and every few years, they do.
They do a report.
Correct. And that was in last year's. I don't, we didn't got them this year.
Yeah, we don't have an auditor's report this year then.
Yeah, we have thirty-three years. So, if there's no objection, we're gonna pass over the auditor's report.
Yeah.
My understanding means the audit, audit is done once every three years?
Next year.
And two years. And it was done last year, that article was just carried over as a copy and paste.
Yeah, 'cause it's in our budget, it's in our fourteen budget.
Yes?
That's done by an outside auditor personally, it shouldn't be in this book.
No, it's done last year.
It was in last year's.
It's every two years, it was done last year. And they copied and pasted the warning?
Well, then, if we might be in there saying that.
Okay, well, they just realized, it seems to me.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, I didn't catch that.
Okay, school directors. One three-year term, two one-year terms. Do we have warm bodies?
No.
Nobody? Send out the word. There will be some positions available. We need Townsend School District Directors.
Whose terms are up?
Whose terms are up? I know one. My wife is three years, Kim is, I mean, one year. One year for Brian, and the three-year spot is here, miss.
Yep.
Okay, to select a school district treasurer for the term of one year. About right now is Anita. To see what salaries the town school district will approve for town school district officers. Treasurer, seventeen ninety, chair, five hundred, members, two fifty each, for a thousand total. I don't think it's page thirty-nine. I guess that, the pages are...
That would be on page thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight. Page thirty-eight. Okay, any questions? No? To see if the town school district will approve thirteen hundred ninety-nine dol-, oh, no. One million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-one dollars for the running expenses and liabilities of the school. Not on page forty, on page...
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine. Thirty-nine. Any discussion on the school budget? Questions for him?
I have questions.
Right, yeah?
Do they have anything they wanna present first?
Something they wanna present?
Soft sell.
Soft sell. They worked hard. Yeah.
Um, there were, there were definitely some changes in this year's budget, and for those who wanna just highlight, we can go over the highlights of the budget if we would like. There was a reduction in overall salaries and expenditures due to two partial retirements, so we have two part-time teachers now that are job sharing, so there was a slight reduction in that area. There was an offset for benefits, 'cause there was a big increase in health insurance overall for all of our staff, so that played a big part. Another big part in this year's budget was the significant increases in special education and the triple E program, which are not something that we can necessarily control, so those are just the number of IEP services that are being provided to students that are within our district. So, that was a very big component to the increase in this year's budget. You'll notice that under special ed, there's a guidance line, you'll see that it went from twenty-five thousand down to zero. Our principal will be doing those services this year to sort of help offset some of the increases in this year's budget. On page thirty-eight, there was a change in the library services, so we're going from a full-time, one day a week, to a half-a-day a week in library services. There were some contractual changes in the principal's office, which had a slight increase there. And those are basically the only highlights to the changes in the budget. There was ten thousand dollars that was allocated under accounting for next year's audit, and then we had some decreases in our maintenance of plant due to the fact that a lot of our major projects have been done. We don't really have any major projects planned for this, for this fiscal budget.
Just a minor question, a very, very small question here, but in Devon Leggitt's report on page thirty-four, in the first paragraph, what's the photograph? We have implemented a literacy coaching team within the PDS staff, and offered peer coaching in support of the writing process?
Mm-hmm.
And on page thirty-six, under expenditures, you have a literacy coach for ten thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Is that within the staff? Is that an outside coach? Is that...
No, that's a current staff.
That's, that's within the current staff?
Yes, correct.
Is this something state of the month that you have to do?
Are you referring to the job coaching position? No, it's not a mandated position, Marjorie. Sure.
Okay. Uh, on page thirty-six, looking at revenues, and I assume you had your finished 2012 budget in front of you when you were making predictions. Your actual, your actual revenue generated by your food service, and this is, I know, just the A4 food service stuff, the stuff the feds took in.
No.
Your actual revenue was, say roughly sixteen thousand dollars, and you would budget it for two thousand and twelve, twenty-two thousand, so you fell six thousand dollars short in anticipated revenue. Uh, your proposed budget has twenty-five thousand dollars in it, and that kind of raises a question in my mind as to why you expect to pull in nine thousand dollars more than you did in 2012, especially with the declining population? I don't see how you could predict that kind of revenue increase without massive price increases.
Oops. There's a couple things going on that was sort of built into this budget, and one is a piece of legislation that's going on about increasing the free and reduced lunch reimbursement that we get. Right now, they have free and they have reduced. They're talking about eliminating the reduced, and anybody who qualifies for reduced would then become free, so we would actually receive additional revenue for those students. So, I think that was one of the items, and the other thing that they've done is they've implemented some changes in the selections and the way food is being prepared, and I think they're thinking about those changes that are gonna be presented, that there'll be more children that'll be buying those options because of some of the changes that are being made in the, in that program. So, it is taking a risk that we, we think there could be more revenue there, but they think they're gonna get more children involved in purchasing into the program by offering fresher foods, better selections, different varieties than we have been offering in the past.
So, the federal food reimbursements are separate line?
Mm-hmm.
So, any additional money that you'd be getting from the feds is probably calculated into that thirty thousand dollars for federal food reimbursements, about halfway down the page?
Yep.
And, you know, I'm, I'm doubtful, from a business perspective, that you can change your revenue that much, especially with the declining population. It was just curiosity on my part, 'cause it doesn't jive with general business principles. You know, and you're talking, you're talking just massive increases or massive extra consumption in order to gain that kind of money. Another question. On your health benefits, all of them, is the figure presented in the budget the net of your payments? In other words, the teachers and staff are expected to pay an X percentage towards their health insurance? Is that figure you're budgeting for the net or the gross amount to pay?
I believe it's our net.
It is the net.
It's the net, cool. It's our portion.
Okay, uh, page thirty-seven at the top. Tuition reimbursement, I have like two thousand and twelve. Your ten thousand dollars over budget? Why? Just curious?
Tuition reimbursement.
Your budget is seven thousand, you spent eighteen thousand.
I don't think we have any control over that. That was for teachers.
That's the teachers?
Yeah.
Right.
So, they may have taken that classes.
Right, but we don't have any control over that, do we? Or does...
No. I mean, no.
That's what I'm saying, 'cause it's not like that.
They ask, it goes through the, no. It goes through the, you know, receiving jobs and that.
Right, right, yeah.
So, they decided...
Yeah, that staff development isn't something that would typically come to the board for approval, that's handled mainly by the administration and by the central office.
Didn't you ask the question as to why we're that far over budget? I mean, you know, this, again, if, accepting everything the superintendent says is not something you have to do, because you're essentially still his boss, and if he brings to you a budget, and you look at it, and you went ten thousand dollars for a small line, I mean, that's, that's better than a hundred percent over budget. You know, you asked that question. Why? Okay? So, I was just curious as to if you knew, because that's, that's an extreme amount of money compared to what we're budgeting for, and we aren't talking a hundred dollars. Next question?
Yeah, I don't think he cares about that, I think he's just looking at the money, so just putting on at him.
Next question, page thirty-eight. Principal's office. All benefits clerical, up by twelve thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Why?
'Cause there were some contractual changes that were made.
So, in other words, you gave them full benefits when they were only getting single. You gave them full family benefits when they were only getting single, because the six thousand dollar figure is roughly a single person's health insurance. Eighteen thousand dollar figure is roughly a family's health insurance. So, as a contractual, as part of the contract with this individual, they get a five hundred dollar raise and twelve thousand dollars for the extra benefits.
That's correct.
Okay.
You read that correctly?
That, I want people to understand that. That's, that's a heck of a contract.
Feel free.
Okay? Okay, and one other question, and it has to do with WCSU. Why on earth did you let Win Hall out? You guys are picking up the cost, or we're picking up the cost of Win Hall's assessment, Win Hall's value to, to group, as it were. The year you're currently in was almost forty thousand dollars, and you just kissed that off and let them out of the union? And we're picking up the tab. Townsend's picking up a share, Holyoke Ray's picking up a share, Jamaica's picking up a share, everybody who's still in the supervisory union is still picking up the cost of running the supervisory union, less forty thousand dollars that Win Hall used to contribute. The cost of running the supervisory union did go down, but now you've got, you've got to make up the revenue from Win Hall, and I just wonder why that was done?
Well, it certainly wasn't done by this board alone, I can attest to that.
Well, no, I realize that.
We are three voices, no, we are three voices on a very large board, and you're right, but not everybody voted to let them out. Obviously, they had to get a majority to be released from that.
What was the reason?
For them wanting to leave?
No, for, for, I mean, in order to get the majority of members to vote yes, let them out, somebody had to present an argument that convinced those people that letting Win Hall out was the right thing to do. So, what argument did they use to convince the majority of the board to release Win Hall from their obligations as part of the supervisory union?
I don't remember. I don't, I don't remember that exact, but it's not affecting us. He's just, he's just looking at it overall, that it's obviously going to affect us because we reduced the revenue coming in, which means everybody's gotta pick up a share of it. He's, he's being very theoretical about this whole thing, he's not necessarily pinpointing it necessarily, but just, you know, overall review of that, but... Yeah, I, I mean, I remember there being some discussions about that, and I know that, you know, Win Hall had their reasons for wanting to move out of this particular district. You know, do I remember the exact arguments on that? No, not necessarily. If you want me to research it and go back through all my notes for WCSU, I'm sure I could pull something together to appease you if you'd like to ask that same question in seven days.
Well, it would be nice, out of curiosity, because I know in the past, we have discussed amongst town people off and on, that it might be nice to withdraw from the supervisory union as well. And so, these are one of the things that, this, this has come up in conversation before, as to whether or not we could actually ditch the supervisory union, and it'd just be kind of nice to know what the Win Hall used as an argument, and how hard or easy it was for them to get out of it.
I find that a very interesting fact that you pointed out, I've been on this board three years, and I have never heard that question presented to us.
Oh, we're talking, we're talking years, we're talking decades, maybe twelve years ago, April.
Oh, okay.
We're talking, we're talking distant past history, but it has been discussed, you know.
It wasn't you saying that location, is it closer to that?
Yeah, I just...
Okay, any further discussion on the one million, three hundred ninety-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-one dollar running expenses and liabilities for the school? Questions? No? No? Good? Okay. Article seven, shall the voters in town Townsend School District authorize the school directors to borrow money anticipated revenue? Article eight, to spend unanticipated funds such as grants or gifts. Article nine, they are setting the time for next year, 2014 Townsend School District meeting at nine, which means then we would be flip-flopping the town. Any discussion? Excellent.
Yeah, I'm questioning this a little bit. I can explain the reasoning behind it, 'cause it's my fault they did it, if you want. Well, I don't think you'd better that way. When, and this was years ago, when it was decided that for the purpose of having distinctly separate meetings, I think that was a legal thing, it, it had to be done this way, after a certain point. When they decided to have a school district meeting and a town meeting on the same day, it was presented that it should be a situation where one year, the school board starts the day, the next year, the town starts the day, and as I pointed out in example last year, and, and I'll take full credit for it, or blame, or whatever, after lunch, the crowd thins out incredibly. So, the school board, or whoever would be presenting in the afternoon, has a distinct advantage in that they're less voters, there's usually less discussion, and it's usually easier to get by the truth. So, the theory was to present, prevent anybody from taking more scrutiny than the other board. It was switched. On an annual basis, one year the school would be first, the next year the school would be second, and so on. And it got, it sort of got lost over the years, because the, they kept the morning for one o'clock, they were cutting and pacing, and so the whole theory behind the original concept is lost, and I brought it up, and I wanna thank April and the board for remembering my comments last year.
Yes, we did.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Okay? Thank you.
Board, board doesn't have any issue. Good. Uh, transact any other non-binding business.
I just got one question.
Sure.
What is your preschool population figure expected to be for next year?
It's a ten? Or do I have that number in my head? I think it's a ten, wait, hold on a second. I've got to do those last record here. I think it was ten too, but I just wanna make sure I have that. I need more papers.
Pino trees?
Pino trees. Yeah. Yes. The last estimate we had at our last meeting showed that we were looking at about ten pre-K students for next year.
Uh, just a follow-up.
Sure.
What is a pre-K student worth? Like three-fifths of a kid, a half a kid?
Point four.
Two-thirds?
Point four eight or something like that.
I was gonna say, it's like, it's just under half, it's like point four eight.
Point four.
Leave it to the state.
Any other questions for the school directors?
Yeah, I just wondered on page forty-one, compared to that, who puts a space together?
It's always...
Oh.
It says Frank Gray.
Frank, 'cause that's the end.
I'm thinking, one of these comes from the state, and one of them comes from Frank.
Page forty comes from Frank.
There you go.
And the forty comes from the state.
Okay, there you go.
My, my, I was very obvious, most of the schools that are listed are nowhere near, southern Vermont, the only one that's listed, that was in Townsend.
It's Dover.
It's just Dover, the rest are all long and far away, which, you know, gives a, it's hard to, southern Vermont, you know, you're good at some patient of other Boston and Syria. I just didn't know if you had any input.
Yeah, I know.
I think it's on the school size, we're integrating these up here.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? School board?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Malaga.
We're gonna have the select board?
Select board.
I want you guys to wear these. Show them who you are.
Grandma's class at town meeting, or, we're gonna save it for town.
And I'll have to make for you for your voting.
Thank you.
Oh, David, you're so good.
Okay, wait. I'm glad you're here.
Come on, David. That's nice.
Wait, recycle reuse.
What's that?
Recycle and reuse.
Recycle and reuse, that's right.
Thank you.
Go ahead, David.
I'm gonna go, I'm gonna sit right down there.
You gonna sit right there?
Mm.
What do you get for tuition on this?
Seven percent?
Is that what's on?
No.
What'd you get, Al?
This one out, you wanna do anything?
I'm ready.
You keep it down, Al.
He called me, I said, you wouldn't be nice to me. It's weird. Yeah, he stood back. I think one of our first orders of business when we get new boards together was going to be, have to provide. That we wanted to check with the mayor whether there are other, besides, they are on Tuesday.
Okay, ready? I have to find the homework.
No.
Not ready?
Mm-hmm.
Soon you start this, soon you get home.
Yeah, my teeth is full.
Town meeting.
We don't lock Tuesday.
Ready? We march along? Okay. Article one, choose a moderator. Anybody have any suggestions?
Yeah.
I might go.
Uh, just, every year I got asked, to act upon the auditor's report. Dates are correct.
Any questions?
Please.
Just page twenty-nine, just, and, just a little fill-out form.
Oh, yeah?
Hi, Chris. Hi, Chris. Hi. The, I'm confused by the purchase of the town board five dollars is town hall, I mean, I come up and pick it up. You know, I get one, I save you money, but I'm not gonna shell out five bucks for it, sometimes I don't understand the charge.
Could you ask our auditor or who's this question? I'm not sure where we got that number.
Okay. You guys understand what your question was?
Yes.
I'm more than happy to pick it up, but if you're gonna mail it to me for free, and I'm gonna have to pay five dollars to pick it up, that's a little weird.
I think, I think he's trying to ask, is it worth five dollars to you?
Oh, I'm not, wow. Oh, you think that's what they're trying to ask?
Yeah, is it worth five dollars to you?
Well, maybe he was trying to ask those that are not gonna mail them or if they would like them, right? Did you opt to not mail to a certain segment, like the paper, yeah, yeah, fans?
I'm just trying to scoop some...
Yeah, I wish it was sent to them for the, on the check.
Bro.
But they're not on the check.
I'm more than happy to pick it up, but if you're gonna mail it to me for free, and I'm gonna have to pay five dollars to pick it up, that's a little weird.
I think, I think he's trying to ask, is it worth five dollars to you?
Oh, I'm not asking that. Wow. Oh, you think that's what they're trying to ask?
Yeah, is it worth five dollars to you?
Well, maybe he was trying to ask those that are not gonna mail them or if they would like them. Right? Did you opt to not mail to a certain segment, like the camper campgrounds?
I'm just trying to scoop some.
But they're not on the checklist.
They said everyone that's on the checklist, who wants to buy one.
Yes. But in the past, everybody on the grand list had also been sent one, and the discussion was, it was really a waste to send them to people at the campground, but that doesn't mean there might not be one or two of them that if you would like to buy them, I don't know, I'm thinking maybe that's what he had in mind.
Well, everybody, this book is paid by everybody, pays taxes. It's not just the voters or anything else.
Correct.
Yeah, I don't know.
It'll be interesting to see the results from this survey. Yes, okay. Anything else about the report?
I would be interested, like, one person contacted me and we found one defective, so I would be interested to know if anyone knows how to do it.
How would I know?
I'm a misjudged copy.
Mine says I don't have to pay taxes, is that right?
Mr. Moderator.
Yes.
First heading of this book is incorrect. It's not June thirty, it's July first through June thirty.
Correct.
You're right.
Correct. It's backwards, that's why I was checking the dates on all these. It's correct here, correct in the warning, wrong on the book.
Hey, neither still, when you look at this book, it's just opposite, correct.
Watch your dates. Okay.
Either somebody did proofread it, or something.
We've had trouble with that before, Karen Townsend. Um, anything else? That's a good, good eye. Anything else about the report? Looks good, moving along. Um, to see what salaries the town will pay its various officials for the ensuing year, town clerk, thirty-three, five through five, town treasurer, I don't need to read them all. Any discussion? Article three, I'll be reading them very well. Discussion?
Okay, how much for raise on this?
Two percent.
Across the board, two percent? So, two percent raise. Is that for everybody, including casual labor?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? No, moving along, article four, elections. Any discussion about the elections? Everybody finding somebody to fill spots?
Select board running again? Or is somebody dropping out?
Select board running again? We got Hetty, Jeff Ross, and Chad Greenwood as the, the furloughed, the paroled?
You gotta wait.
Necessary? Gotta wait?
You gotta wait and see.
Surprise? Okay.
Rick, I'm sure there'll be a three-year seat if you want.
No, I was just curious. I suppose we'll take news on them, so.
Um, okay, anybody have anything, anybody know, anybody that wants to run, please have them step forward. Article six, no, five, uh, property tax collection and the dates. Any discussion on that? Did we check the dates to make sure they're not on weekends?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Okay. Um, any discussion about the dates?
Thursday. I think they're also not on the Thursday.
And they're not when the town halls closed, right. Okay. Any discussion about those dates? That one looks good. Article six, to see if the town will appropriate four-nine-four for the running expenses and liabilities of the town, of which one-eight-four to be raised by taxation. I have page twelve and thirteen as the pages that those numbers, I was able to find those numbers on.
I'd like to have the select board tell me where the difference between the income and what was voted, but doesn't figure out the surplus.
Kim, do you want to address that?
Yeah, Ervin and I have known about that earlier today. The, the extra, some of the extra income is from, um, the adjustment to the grand list because of the, um, transposed second power line that was put through town. Um, we didn't know about that increased assessment until after the grand list had been lodged and the taxes already set, so it was unanticipated revenue that we got. Um, plus there were some, you know, uh, some of the other revenues were more than anticipated, so it resulted in a, a surplus. But what did happen was then we had to turn around and send a good chunk of that surplus to the state of Vermont, um, for additional education taxes. We are now ascending town, and so, you know, some extra dollars that we collect has to be sent to the state, we don't get to keep it there. So, that our non-residential grand list put us over from being a sending, uh, receiving town to a sending town. So, the surplus that we put in there, um, that we're giving back to the taxpayers is a combination of what we took in minus the extra monies that we had to pay out.
But you look at this book, there's nothing to tell you in this book. It were a gold town and sent into the state of Vermont, so there's no way you can figure that out. No page shows you what's sent to the state of Vermont for education, on your commercials and your second homes or maybe your primary home.
Maybe we can figure out some way to reflect that next year.
Yeah, no, I said, sir, but I'm writing it up so that they will correct it.
Yeah.
Why couldn't you have stated in the town report about getting that extra revenue that you hadn't planned out, you didn't know you were going to get? How come you didn't even bring it up? You had money to plan with all year long.
Well, you did say right here that we became a sending town rather than a receiving town, you're under report.
Yeah, right here, what's the difference in the income? Well, there's nothing to tell you, you got active with a power company or anything like that, so you don't know how that came about.
Right. You've spent money this year, just like you had it. You did it. You went way over on some of these things, and yet you're asking for four hundred, and what is it, four hundred and ninety-four thousand? This article?
Well, the actuals in the general fund, Jan, for ending June thirty, two thousand and twelve, were less than the budgeted amount in the general fund. That's the one, huh? We budgeted four hundred and forty-seven, three ninety-six, and spent four thirty-two, five fifty-one, so there's some of that surplus, so to speak, is the difference between what we budgeted and what we actually spent. Um, we budgeted seventy-five thousand for non-tax revenue, we brought in a hundred and thirty-five, no, almost a hundred and thirty-six thousand, so, you know, there's another sixty-something, you know, sixty-one thousand dollars extra revenue right there that was not budgeted. Um, and then, of course, we had the, you know, the liquid taxes, we budgeted fifteen thousand for interest, we brought in twenty-six thousand. So there were several areas where we either under, spent under our budget, or increased our revenues over what had been budgeted, so it resulted in a fairly large, um, surplus, I should say, surplus. Um, and the select board made the decision to, you know, give almost all of that back, or whatever was available to give back, they give back every penny of it to reduce taxes. You know, it's not, that money was not spent somewhere else, it was, you know, returned in the calculation here for setting the amount to be raised for this next year.
And I think it may be helpful to people who aren't aware of it, that our budget for the next year would be three percent above what it was for the current year. Um, it is thirteen percent, because that ten percent is the FEMA money that we're still waiting to hear about, um, from the damn culvert.
By the fact you said at your last meeting, you got some of that.
We're still waiting for the bigger chunk.
Well, wait, hold your hand down. That's the way the double reports.
And that's exactly why we left the majority of that surplus coming back to the town.
That's the sound like you're doing, getting it. How come on that culvert, if they don't write to the state?
Well, that may be the next step.
Because, not only that, you must have some paperwork somewhere, that said they let you bury that stuff to come out there and bug that culvert. So, the state is the one that's really liable.
There was an interesting discussion here last Friday, and those plans are already in the works. But obviously, I can't discuss much more because we're on television.
But that same slide, it's still there, there's not a tree or anything cut at the top of the bank, and there's a tree down there right now.
What you don't realize is the garage down below there was wiped right out, and you couldn't collect anything on that, because you didn't owe anybody anything. Had you owed somebody something, you couldn't collect the money from the FEMA.
But being the person that he was.
Everything, his garage and all his equipment.
Exactly, and being the person that he was, he got devastated, and there wasn't anything anybody could do to help him.
No, but who was the state, the state approved, it's got somebody big butt.
Yes, sir. And, as I said, there's a move afoot.
And that's what, what I tell you, I say you should go back after him for the difference, because at the time of it, that culvert would have taken every ounce of wire, it would have come down, and if it hadn't had that rust and stuff, it probably. And that's what FEMA was arguing with you people about.
Yes, sir.
I know, I'm in some two-three D trucks, so I know how it works.
Further discussion on the four-nine-four?
Has that been, I have a question with that, with that whole thing with the sending count tax? Would that have been also considered into the tax rate possible for sending rates for this budget? Because it's obviously gonna happen again. If you're ascending town this next year, is the budget, when you tax, when you vote to set your tax rate, where everyone's taxed, I mean, that's the big bottom line.
Yes, it will be factored in, because that number will be a part of what the state tells us come June, what we need to raise in taxes. They're the ones that tell us based on the grand list and the school budgets. Now, the school budget's a huge driver in whether we're ascending or receiving town, and, you know, the higher the budget, the higher amount of money that we're gonna have to send over to what we need to our town. So, um, those numbers won't be available, usually the end of June, by the time the state sends us those education numbers.
Another thing, I don't know, what is, uh, it doesn't tell you in this book, and I understand you're supposed to have a, a bill or something, or any check that you make out, show ours covered, there's nothing in here showing it. But the state, got there anything else?
I don't understand the question, Erv.
By way of warrant.
What, what was sent to the state, there's no way it tell it. And, and you got, you must have a bill or something that should have showed up somewhere, money sent to state of Vermont for education.
Well.
Yeah, it is in here, Erv, and it's right here on page forty, that, that comparison that Frank Rucker puts together. Um, except the elementary school portion, does not have.
That doesn't have everybody.
Doesn't have little gray.
No, it don't, it don't have little and gray, or.
You have to go to the little.
The gray house only went to East Montclair, or Georgia, or anyplace else in state of Vermont. So, you, there's no way you look in this book and.
Well, because it wouldn't, it's not, the money that is sent to the state was not, um.
It's a tax money.
Yeah, but it was done after this time period, right? I'm thinking.
They've been doing this right now, they didn't do something just new last year.
No, but the extra is new.
Mr. Moderator.
They still in two thousand and twelve.
Okay, Rick?
The money, and Kim, if I'm wrong, ruck me, the money that Erv is talking about would never show up in the town budget, okay? Because we raised taxes for the town.
Right.
As a town, and we raised taxes for the school on a dictate by the state. The only thing that happens is that all the money comes into the town.
Right.
Kim gets to keep the portion for the town, which is part of the budget, but has to do with the state money, what they want. It's never, ever gonna be part of the town numbers. It's never gonna be there because it is money that belongs to the school. So, it has to be accounted for in the school budget, and then you have to read up how much you actually end up paying, you have to figure out the grand list, times the education tax rate, subtract your school budget from it, and then you can figure out how much you sent to the state. But it's not gonna be in the town budget, ever.
Well, so it now isn't the income.
Well, it's, it's, it's not supposed to be, because it's not town's money, it is the school's money. Only the town's money can be recorded as town money. The school money is not the town's, period, not any of it.
I know, the school ha, the town has to send a check to the school. They always have.
No, I, I understand that, Erv, but they don't have to account for it in the town budget, because it's not part of the town budget.
Okay, we're gonna look into see whether or not, David, I saw your writing before. Yes. Whether or not a line for that monies should be and could be included in next year's. Correct. All right, it was your point. Thank you. Any other further discussion? No further discussion? To see if the town will vote to appropriate eight-three-seven for the running and liabilities of maintaining the town roads, of which seven-seven-nine is to be raised by taxation. Page seventeen, I believe, yes, page seventeen. And if you look on the bottom section of page seventeen, the fiscal year two thousand and twelve highway fund, the first two numbers, you'll see a six-twenty-four, four-fifty, and a two-thirteen, two-oh-one, if you add those together, that will give you your eight-thirty-seven, six-fifty-one. And then, I haven't, I want to, where do you want? Right here. Oh. Under the proposed two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and fourteen revenue. Under the proposed two thousand, fiscal year two thousand and fourteen revenue, you'll see a six-twenty-four, four-fifty, which is our highway fund expenses. And then you will see a highway equipment expenses of two hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and one dollars. Those added together come up with the eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Of which, we're deducting the surplus of a hundred and seven thousand, adding the hundred and sixty-two thousand deficit from Irene, deducting the total non-tax highway revenue of a hundred and thirteen thousand, and coming up with the total to be raised in taxes of seven hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars. Correct, Kim?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thirty-five thousand dollars worth of gravel on thirty-five.
The gravel.
What about some gravel?
Where the wood ones are all broke up there.
That's not thirty-five.
No, it's the gravel.
Well, it says thirty-five right here. And not only that, they haven't replaced the guy who wrote stuff down in four years. Don't tell me about it, because I watched that.
They forgot me, down to all.
And they got him to the wing, and they still didn't replace it.
And we're slowly having to turn that around. seven hundred and seventy nine thousand, six hundred and fifty one dollars. Correct, Kim?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Thirty five thousand dollars worth of gravel on thirty five.
The Grafton Road.
What about some gravel?
Where the wood ones are all broke up there.
That's not thirty five.
No, it's the Grafton one.
Well, it says thirty five right here. And not only that, they haven't replaced the guy who wrote stuff down in four years. Don't tell me about it because I washed that.
They've forgotten to all...
And they got them to the wing and they still didn't replace it.
And we're slowly having to turn that around.
And another question.
Yes.
Last year they crushed gravel, how come fifty thousand began this year?
That goes back to the road standards that, as you know, in two thousand, in nineteen ninety nine, for us to get FEMA funds, we had to adopt road standards, road and culvert standards, from the Department of Transportation. The road and culvert standards we had to adopt this year to continue to get funds from FEMA require us to have more gravel on the roads. So we're going to have to crush more gravel on the roads.
You're going to turn around and break whatever in the ditch.
And we're going to be, we're, I, Ervin?
I...
Ervin?
I...
I know, we're going, we're going to be turning around and reevaluating all of those. But that's where that gravel is going. You'll see that we have several culverts down, two of which have...
Culvert number six, eighteen.
Grafton Road culvert number sixteen.
Right above Acton Hill.
Not according to that.
The big culvert.
Not according to that. It may be yours, it may be yours, but not for the highway state, the state highway map. I said bridge two or three, I believe.
That's not a bridge.
But that's what they got it done for.
The highway map that we've received from the state showing the bridges and the culverts has that listed as culvert number sixteen.
They're supposed to change them all over then because...
It's the Wyndham Regional Financing Commission, we did the call it in.
According to state highway map I got, it's a couple of years old, it doesn't list it, just blue six.
No, that's...
That one out was the biggest problem. Another case, trees have crossed that brook right now. If they don't take them out, they're going to bug this down there in culvert every time.
And if you'll notice, we have eighteen thousand dollars in there for contracted services. And that's one of the things that we're going to be going through, using the expertise of the tree warden to identify trees that we can take out, so that we can take them out and start saving the, more of the culverts.
Some of them trees been that since they got money from the ice storm. They never got to be that.
More of them are going to be taken out. We also have engineering, money in for an engineering study for the West Hill Bridge, number forty two.
Did they don't get washed, buckmuts and everything, everything?
Last this year, no, they did not.
Yeah, they're supposed to. Keep the salt from the sand and everything from eating off.
They don't use salt and sand.
And don't make desert, certain amount of the truck, track in there, off your trucks and stuff going off the damn road, they're going out.
Any further discussion?
I'm not saying it doesn't need the engineering, but they must both be cleaned, so they ain't going to sand it or gravel or anything, no. That's, you work at your, think bridge inspection sheet goes down from state lock and put on it, sand and grab on the buckmuts or a lot of beans.
We got the gravel.
Yes, Red?
Yeah, the road sign, proposed budget fifteen thousand, are we replacing street signs or what?
Unfortunately, also, the state has come down with a mandate, state and federal government, that your road signs have to have, have to be retroreflective. So we have, this is an estimated budget for between a quarter and a third of our road signs, to replace them over the next three or four years so that they're retroreflective. And of course, as with the culvert and the bridge inventory and maintenance, now we have to have a sign inventory and start doing more maintenance on that.
Yeah, but what does your MUTD say for putting signs up?
For putting which sign up?
Any sign up. You grow it across the river, they're not four and a half, five foot tall, and it calls for seven foot to the bottom of the something.
And as we're replacing the signs...
Yeah, he did that put up.
As we're replacing the signs, we're going to have to reevaluate and go right back to the MUTCD. The manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, it's a federal manual, for those of you who...
Been in effect for a long time.
Yes, sir, it has. And it's caught quite a few people, and obviously continues to catch quite a few people. Retreatment, you can see we have money in for retreatment. The town has ten miles of paved roads.
About twelve.
About twelve. And we need to do a certain amount each year. Last year, we did a shim coat, and we need to come back and do a second overlay, or look at doing another shim coat on some of the other sections.
I talked to a lot of engineers, even state engineers. They told me they put an inch shim coat down, they don't mount any more than a drag shim to true the road up before they put the top coat on. So in other words, this million dollars have to ask going fifty feet instead of seventy five feet by putting a thicker coat on, and it's not any better than the drag shim.
And we'll reevaluate drag shim as we get to that point. Yes, sir, the discussion here, okay.
Yeah, just curious, under retreatment, David, there was a line for state grant, is this a situation that the state is no longer, I mean, the line was there, we obviously didn't get it because it was a great big negative for two thousand and twelve, but is this something the state's not continuing or...
It's not every year.
It's not every year?
And we did get a considerable grant from the state to do retreatment for running hip.
Is it not money or not?
Oh, you're...
Oh, I know that.
To go to every town, so, you know, maybe you bang with the towns and they got it two years ago, maybe go to Lodzboro or Bookton or somewhere next to three years, if we start to unhook the towns.
Further discussion?
We may not even get that.
Further discussion? No? Okay. Same no discussion, moving on to Article eight. See the town will raise eighty five thousand dollars for new highway department truck. Discussion? One thing that the town needs to understand is, uh, hold on just a second, let me find that truck. On page sixteen. Truck T eight, it's a two thousand and seven Sterling. It's no longer being made, matter of fact, that company is no longer in business, and they're no longer making spare parts. So while we still have a truck in fairly decent shape, that one has, I believe...
Fifty three thousand.
Fifty three thousand miles on it. We could potentially get out from underneath it, knowing that the spare parts are going to get more expensive, instead of buying, I mean, Kurt, we bought some spares this year. And we wanted to buy more of them and hold them, but it really wasn't cost effective. So we're trying to look out and make sure that we don't put the town in a position that we've got a truck that we're not going to get reimbursed on, that we're not going to be able to sell because we can't get the spare parts, because the spare parts aren't in existence, or they're so expensive that it's cost prohibitive. So this is, this is... That is the truck. For the truck. There's no funds that you've been collecting over the years or... There's no funds that we've been collecting over the years. Okay. Get a nice one. Top holder?
Yeah, if you buy the truck, then over fifteen thousand dollars in the equipment line that's been allocated for the Sterling, for ice cream bars and stuff like that, would that basically go towards additional money you paid for the truck or would the fifteen thousand dollars essentially not be spent?
Some of the fifteen thousand will essentially be spent, because if you look at the truck T one, it has five thousand, which is some minor maintenance, and if you look at truck T two, it has three thousand, which is tax title, license, inspection. So some of the money would be spent. I would hope that that truck, being brand new, the majority of that fifteen would come back as surplus.
I assume you're doing major on greater.
The greater, actually...
Twenty two thousand.
At twenty two thousand?
It maybe works out.
It needs about eight thousand dollars worth of tires, eight to ten thousand dollars worth of tires. And it continually needs blades and something about running a grader over a dirt road, it just eats into the blades. Or the cutting edge.
Each of tires up to the rock top. Up down the rock top will be a tire up, Gregor's uncooperating, they all on dirt road, you know. Running it back forth every day.
And that's...
West Townsend and stuff, that's what's keeping your tires up. If you're up there for two, three days, you can find a place where you can park it, and you got it.
And we're looking for places up in West Townsend or up on Acton Hill or Townsend Acres that we can park the grader or some of the other equipment, so that we're reducing the amount of highway mileage of this equipment spent. Any further discussion of the truck?
Yeah, I do, I have just a quick note on that. I'm not arguing about it or anything, but I do have a suggestion that when you do buy equipment like that, we don't run in the same vault like you did if you bought a Sterling. A lot of, I had the experience from buying fire trucks is, is when you look into your manufacturers and get your bids, that you look at the company itself, and they actually all have to have an issue, basically what their liability is and stuff like that to longevity. It's hard to explain, I can't remember the word to use for it, but there is stuff there, so you are buying from a credited company that, but nowadays, the times with the money and stuff, the bankruptcy and stuff, if they're in good standing and not in bankruptcy themselves, it's highly recommended if you look at that.
And a large number of the manufacturers, they've been going through a buyout. So we're getting to the point that there are fewer and fewer American truck companies. So this will be another issue that will be coming up for the populace.
Yeah, but they all sit there in guaranteed price for so long when it was, so.
Okay, any further discussion on new truck? I vote for red.
We're going for a rural equipment division. I think we could do that.
Yellow. Article ten, no, Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise five thousand dollars for the Stone Arch Bridge Reserve. I have a question. Is this a new reserve fund?
Yes, I believe, yes, okay.
Are these new reserves that you're asking for, how's this different from the capital expenditure program? Not a bit of difference, is it?
The capital expenditure program would be returned to the town each year?
No, that's not the way we set it up.
Okay, and it may be just a lack of institutional knowledge on the board?
People voted they didn't want to do that sort of thing. They don't want to save money. Capital expenditure voted out, that's just the same thing right here. These articles right here are the same exact thing we had.
Logistic thinking behind capital expenditure fund was is that residents currently living in here pay taxes, didn't necessarily need to be putting money away for people that might be living here for ten, ten years from now when they weren't living here. And then at the time, you could borrow, the other thing they talk about was you could borrow money for less at that time, and they got rid of that, the capital expenditure fund, that's right. That's part of the...
It was set up in working beauty, there was, people voted down. And that's just what this thing is.
And that's essentially what it is to, but it's to make sure that we have money set aside to...
But we had it set up, fine.
Okay.
We're paranoid.
It's safe, it's set up, and they're raising so much money, they had it all figured out.
You placed it?
And people voted down.
Well, hopefully, the people will vote it in because we have some historic bridges that we have to, the town has to maintain them back.
That's not recording my thoughts.
Correct.
I was just wondering where these bridges are.
These bridges are, one of them you cross as you go into Back Wyndham Road into Wyndham, Back Wyndham Road into Townsend, out of West Townsend. Two of them are off of the State Forest Road. Isn't there one around thirty five? Right by Simpson Brook? Simpson Brook. And there's one on the way past the culvert that got washed out up on the right, aren't there some up there? There's one up there, there's one on Stone Arch Way, and there's one at State Forest. Yes. Better than the broken bridges we build now. Still standing.
Is that, does somebody else have anything to say about that?
The federal, they just mandate that we, because they're on the historic placement, they mandate that we keep them in repair.
They go right back again, shuffing it right back to the town.
Stuffing it right back to the town, so I agree. Any other, oh, hey.
Well, I just, I just wanted to say, the reason that we were in these articles this way, or I think I suggested that we did, is, I mean, if we raise five thousand dollars and it's for the bridge, and we do it as a separate article, we call it reserve, and that money can't be used for anything else. If you put it in the budget and say you want five thousand for, to repair the bridges, then the select board has the, you know, ability to spend that money anywhere else they want to.
Not, oh, no, only on bridges, if that's what it's raised for. According to the state law...
I'm not going to argue about that or anything, I'm just trying to explain why we decided to do it this way.
No, no, but I said you can't put it anywhere else.
If people want to, Ervin, don't interrupt me, please. I was just trying to address why it's a reserve, why we called it that way. Because, you know, the, anything that the town votes as a reserve, it can only be used for that, so if this coming year, if we only spend twenty five hundred of it, the other twenty five stays there and we spend it some other time on the bridges. Or the same thing with the fire pond, whatever we don't send is set aside for that particular purpose. Whereas if you stick it in the general fund budget, you can, the select board can spend it anywhere they want.
Yeah, that's according to the state law.
Yes.
Okay.
Article two of that, the state...
Article, Article ten is a, is a reserve fund...
The bridges, that much fucking...
For the fire ponds, so we might as well wrap these two together and...
I had an off-topic question anyway.
Off-topic? We're staying.
We're on topic here.
You finish that, I, it was just a joke, I was just curious.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, I, Kim, what is the municipal interest rate for buying a new truck? Just out of curiosity, so we're two percent, basically? That's all the questions.
Should have been asked before. Okay, so any other discussion on setting up these two new reserve accounts?
There's three here, I agree.
There's three, one, two, and then three, yes, sorry, it's on my next page. Okay.
I'm just curious about the study committee.
Hmm?
The study committee. Because we got the fire department, and the Stone Arch Bridge, but then we got, we were talking about three articles here, so we're talking about the study committee for the transfer station.
We're now up to the, that one.
Okay, yeah.
We're now talking about the five thousand dollar to study for, the new location for the transfer station.
Okay, so I'm assuming you're planning on paying somebody to do this? What, what kind of person are you going to pay, some solid waste engineer or something?
Unfortunately, so far, we haven't been paying anyone. I think we're going to need some engineering done. I'm not even sure that we're at the point of talking about moving it, although maybe. It just, we need to be looking at what's, what we're going to do. Any of you who use the compactor have probably noticed that it's falling apart. From looking online, they're running about a hundred and eighty thousand for a new compactor. From looking online, they're running about a hundred and eighty thousand for a new compactor. And I opened my big mouth and said, "Oh, we can do something cheaper than that." And so I'm stuck with it. But I wanted a little money for some engineering. And there are several other people who...
Well, that five thousand won't even pay for the first payment on the end here.
Well, we'll see.
No, you'll have to see. We've already been through that sort of process. You can't find one cheap in there.
Kim?
I was just wondering why we need to have a new transfer station and recycling.
You definitely need a new compactor. You don't throw the compactor off.
Yeah, it's a new compactor.
What's with that pole that's sticking out there?
Well, that's the compactor. That's the actual...
That's the truck.
That's the truck. Well, what's the transfer station?
Um, well, that would be more recycling. And one of the reasons we need to be talking about it is because the state has passed new laws. I think in three years, they're going to make you recycle composting and various things. So, I mean, there's new stuff happening. And if we're thinking about spending money on a new truck, I think we need to look at the big picture. That's all. Good question.
That truck, it's only, it's twenty-one years old.
And it never had a roof over it. And there it is.
The guys are keeping it running. It's awesome. Didn't get much for it if you sell it?
No. I was thinking it's dying a dozen.
Okay, any further discussion on the five thousand dollars for the transfer station?
Like old tires.
No, good. Article twelve. To see if the town will raise forty-three thousand dollars to the library. Page twenty-two. I have written down to the library. Any librarians here? No? Okay. The report is on page twenty-two. You may direct any questions to the librarians at that time.
Well, I would like to know for people's information that for the last couple of years, they were giving their... Giving the library in a five percent raise. And this year, they came to the board, I think a couple of months ahead of time, and said, "What are you giving to your employees?" And they kept the library's raises in line with what the rest of the town was doing.
So it's two percent? Good to know. Any other discussion about the library? Article thirteen. To see if the town will vote to raise ten thousand dollars to replace from the capital expenditure fund fire department reserve toward a future pumper. This, I believe, is the repetitive one?
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to give you guys an update. Fire Department's been researching the reform committee on the truck committee. And we had come up with a... Kind of a whole... She did it pretty quick. Will probably be a motion on the floor to raise up to twenty thousand dollars due to the fact that we feel by the time we went and reassessed our vehicles and stuff, and when we're going to need a new truck for a new pumper and also a new chassis for the utility truck, that there wouldn't be enough significant funds for that. And we're projecting that replacement would be due... The engine would be due at 2020. And then from there on out, we've decided, we've kind of made a fleet replacement schedule plan. And going on that, our frontline engine would be replaced every twenty years with an assessment at the sixteenth year of its life to see if it may need to be replaced prior to that, but at least getting fifteen years out of it and trying to stretch it to twenty. And at twenty years, we don't have to be buying a new frontline engine if it's that point. And that frontline engine will be going to the reserve status. And we also looked at our support vehicles, which is our utility trucks and stuff. And really, there was... I mean, we hated to say no funding in there, but we kind of assumed that that whole funding thing would be all under the same budget item as the engine, you know, the reserve fund is there every time. We like the idea of trying to continue to build the fund and then paying for the truck outright, then sitting there and have to go through and borrow for it every year to make the payment and budget for the payment. Technically, the twenty thousand dollars would be about the same as the payment. To keep it short, at two... To replace the frontline engine at year 2020, when we feel that we're going to be required to get another engine, if we kept up to ten thousand dollars, we would be getting two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which we feel a new engine at that time will probably cost us between two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand. Two, we... If we increased it to fifteen thousand dollars by 2020, we'd have two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars in that fund. And if we increased it to two hundred and twenty, by that time, 2020, we would have three hundred and ten thousand dollars in there. And they would also... Our feeling is is we could buy then, hope we get a truck that would be cheaper, like two hundred and seventy-five. And the remainder of that in 2021... Basically, 2021 is when we're hoping to replace the utility truck chassis. Just the chassis, the box is in awesome shape now. That's looking at basically another eight years with what we have. But we're going to reassess that basically year 2016, 2017 to make sure that we're still on that timeline. So we felt that the increase was necessary just to make sure that there's enough money in that fund to purchase the vehicles. And we've come up with that timeline due to the fact we feel that what piece of apparatus we have right now can buy us the time. Because this is where you guys need to think. And this is where I've been personally been saying it for years. That firehouse will not fit the new engine. The present firehouse that we have, the doors will not allow for a chassis that is built today fit in the doors. You can't even buy a commercial chassis, a pickup truck chassis, take it off, no lights and nothing, and back it in the doors. Nine foot four, nine foot three door, a truck won't fit. But a firebox is usually... As small as we can get one is ninety-six. So we felt this time would be very wisely to look into possibly remodeling the existing firehouse or building a new firehouse. I know that's a big, tough bullet to bite, but we've got the time now so we're not going to find a truck at the same time trying to build a building either. If we even had to go find it. So there's some food for thought, but the food for thought is we'd like to, we're going to propose increase that to twenty thousand. To make sure it's an adequate number. We were asked to... We were asked by several board members to try to figure that out to see if what money we were putting in there was enough. And we did that research. And we actually researched what we have, did an assessment.
Excellent report. Bring that on Tuesday. If you do increase to twenty. Except watch out for bringing up the new firehouse because that's not quite germane to that article.
No, my name is...
I know, I know. I know, but I could stop you from doing that. So just be careful. Okay, no, but that was really good. That explanation, I think, is people need to hear that. People need to hear why things are being done. That was good.
Hearing it for years.
Article fourteen. I really dislike New York's murals. Fifteen hundred dollars for the old cemetery fund. I'm on the old cemetery fund. People are dying to get in.
That's the old one.
Article fifteen. To see if the town will vote fourteen, five, ten for the social services. Page fifteen, fifty-one. And it's actually down from last year, according to my research. Any discussion on the social services?
Where do you put in your community society funding and your... Is that what he's somewhere else?
I think you'd have to talk to the screening... Oh, do we have a screening social person? Social service person?
Well, yeah, it came out of the general fund this year because we have joined the humane society, so we're now paying them dues.
We didn't have it in the budget actually.
That's true.
But you went ahead and signed a contract with it.
For six months.
I saw you do it.
For six months.
You can't get out of that one.
I think I just said it. I'm not trying to get out of anything, Jan.
The way this thing is set up, you don't even know about this company, you're ignorant. Unless you watched TV. You did sign a contract with it, so how much is that going to cost now?
Does anybody remember how much it cost? That's what I'm looking for.
You also signed a contract with the sheriff's department. How much is that?
Uh, we haven't signed that yet.
You haven't?
No.
Not for you.
Sorry, but that's...
The human society believes it's about five hundred dollars. And it actually is in this year's town keeper's budget.
I thought the five hundred dollars in the town keeper's budget were just for the...
Actually...
It's for the...
Voter, thirteen, fifteen hundred.
It's for bonds? No, huh?
It's for bonds.
It's for bonds? I understood. Am I wrong? You never paid anybody.
Yeah, I never heard about a bond.
Yeah, you have to be bonded.
Well, they have to be bonded. They have to be bonded. Well, like I said, it had to be bonded. It was the constable was the town keeper, he had to be bonded. That was probably what we all...
Okay, well...
The bond was coming out of the constable's budget. It wasn't coming out of the town keeper's budget. The town keeper's budget was for the food and the shelter of the animal.
Yeah, but it didn't use the const to anything, is what I was trying to get across?
Yes, ma'am, you're correct. And now it does.
Now it does. And while we're on that subject, what are you going to do about a constable that doesn't live here now?
The constable... The first constable is going to be turning his equipment in later this week. He is... He is a registered voter in the town of Wardsboro.
Yeah, and he's been there for quite some time.
But he has been acting as constable for Townsend. He hasn't been acting as well as the second constable has, but he has been acting as constable for the town of Townsend.
Jan, it's illegal for us to appoint somebody new until he resigns.
I realize that, but...
But he runs out next weekend.
Yeah, yeah. Which is good. Oh, somebody else in mind? Well, we're thinking about Warren as first constable.
No, I have to show him that money.
He got some of the fire products.
And I'm going to be talking to him about that. Okay, social services done.
Yes.
Just authorize Article fourteen. To see if the select room will raise sufficient funds. The dates are correct? The dates are correct, I believe.
What are we on?
Number fourteen, fifteen, sixteen. No, that's the one I think we have problems with the dates in the past.
Yeah.
Those dates are now correct.
June fourth.
Article seventeen. To see if the town will authorize the board to convey any properties. These are boilerplate, any gifts, and any non-binding business. Does anybody know of any non-binding business, such as the Vermont Yankee thing or personhood or corporatehood or whatever it was one year? Anything going around? No?
Heard of anything.
Just wondering if you want my pop-up, huh? No?
Changing the schedule with the school board, use the school meeting earlier. Usually one of those guys from the savings and...
Tops.
These jobs are meeting and... But that would have ended up being part of the school meeting. So I just something to keep in mind if they choose to come.
Well, the meeting would start at nine. They might not start until nine-thirty. Okay, any other? Anything to discuss or any other questions? We'll see you Tuesday for a fun-filled town meeting.
No.